That means it's good. But that means it's. That would be a giga-mackies.
Okay, it is 5:00 PM on October 13th, 2025. I call this meeting of the Clear Creek Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present and that this meeting has been duly called and that its notice has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. And with that, I believe we don't have any community input, right? So the next item up is the consent agenda. And I would like to pull item number two. And with that, does anybody want to make a motion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda minus item two.
All right, thank you, Ms. Checkin'. All right, any other discussion? No? All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, no opposed? Thank you. All right. So with item two, the reason I ask for it to be pulled is so can we get some clarification on that and compared to policy with board appointments and things of that nature? So if we had some clarification.
Sure, and I asked Dr. Silva, okay, so Christina Ford generally chairs this committee and she is flying in this evening, but Dr. Silva will kind of just at least give a background of the names that were recommended, how they were selected.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, guys. In the past several years, this is the process that we have used. We post on the website and send communication out that we are interested in parents who are interested in being a part of the committee. This year, we had, we posted that in mid-September, September 19th, I think, and then we had about 170 parents who expressed interest. I think slightly down from last year, I want to say we had a little over 200 last year, but around the same number. We had a random drawing after that. And what we do, is that me making that? Okay, I'm sorry. What we do with that, then with all of those, is we divide them by feeder pattern to ensure that we have representatives from around the district. So you'll see on the background of the tracking, we have the names and sort of where they're, where they're, who they're representing, what school they're representing. We have intermediate, elementary, intermediate, and high school representing each of the feeder patterns. So that's the process that we took for that, very similar to what we did last year.
Any follow-up?
No, thanks for that clarification. And with regards to how that aligns with policy?
So the policy does provide that the board appoints the members of the SHAC at least five parents. And then there can be other people from other categories. The process has been that those appointments are made based on the recommendation of administration. It seeks out, and I think Parent Square was utilized to get interest, and there was a lot of interest this time. And so the policy does state the board will appoint, but it is based on the recommendation of the administration is how it's been done historically to comply with policy. is how it's been done historically to comply with policy.
So if a board member would like to make a recommendation, can we approve the parents now and then submit those to the superintendent?
Yes, sir, absolutely. The board can choose to go ahead and appoint these 15 parents that have been selected and certainly if each trustee wants to provide Dr. Silva with the name of another individual that fits within the categories set forth in Board Policy BDF legal, which sets out all the parameters of the different categories of people who can be appointed in addition to the parent represented, because there's a lot of thought into the five from each level already. But my recommendation would be that each trustee submit one, you know, one name that fits and we can, Ms. McMahon can send trustees a list of those categories per policy of, you know, other types of individuals who could be appointed to the Shack.
Yeah, and we've pulled those, you know, pulled the policy for this discussion and, you know, there are multiple options and some of the parents may fall into that. So like you said, with the five high schools wrapped, half of the intermediates and five elementaries are on that committee for parents. But if you approve those parents tonight, then we can, if that's approved, then we go ahead and follow up because some of them may decide that that's not what they want to do, you know, but that ensures at least five that have, you know, most of those are parents, that's the basic requirement. And over and above that, we can go back and at the October meeting. And if you're interested in nominating anyone else to be on this committee, we'll send out that form. Ms. McMahon will send that out and then we can bring those nominations back to the meeting in October. Definitely, we can do that.
So I know a few years ago, Memorial Hermann had a physician that was on the Shack and it was very helpful to, you know, to have an outside opinion, somebody that's not totally integrated and, you know, I think having others besides just the parents and, you know, the law does say that the majority of the members must be parents, not employed by the district, so it doesn't mean all of them are parents. So I think it's very helpful to have outside.
Absolutely, and I, you know, I think that, and it has gone and it's changed a little bit since that 80th legislature. Some changes occurred on the Shack Committee, but that is definitely something. So what we'll do is we will not wait until Friday just because, you know, to expedite this, but we'll send out, if this is okay, a list of other options and just that, and actually the policy does say the board may appoint one or more persons from each of the following groups or representative from a group other than a group specified. So quite frankly, you know, it could be anybody that would be interested in being on this committee. So that it gives you a list of recommendations, but it's not, that is not inclusive.
Okay, so are we to expect an email from your office in the next couple of days to submit our recommendations?
Yes, so we'll send an email and if y'all have a recommendation for the Shack Committee in addition to, we'd like to go ahead and bring forward if so, that we could go ahead and approve these parents if that's acceptable, and then we can go back and add to the committee.
Okay, all right, all right. So I will make that motion. So I move to approve the recommendation of the superintendent to approve and appoint the 15 parent members of the CCIS, for the CCISD School Health Advisory Council. And any other conversation? None? All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, no opposed, thank you. All right. So our tax rule.
Okay, so Ms. Aragon has joined us this afternoon and will present the 2025 Certified Taxable Property Values along with the 2025 tax roll for your approval.
All right, it's good to be with you this evening. We're going to talk about the 2025 values, the collections, and then a little bit about customer service this past year that I want to share with you guys. In July, we start off with the Harris and Galveston Certifieds. The letter that I provided to you requires by law that I certify that particular value as it came in at certification. That number was $32,287,289, sorry, let me start again. $32,287,289,763 worth of taxable value for our 2025 tax roll. This roll, as you can see by this chart, does get updated every month by what we call a supplemental roll. And we get one supplemental roll from both HCAD and GCAD that come in at different times during the month that we load. So far, I've been able to upload sup one before we get out our first tax bills, which we're planning on going out hopefully by the end of this week, is the plan. You can see by the chart that the difference between 2025, which is listed at the bottom, versus 2024, which is at the top, we're still missing almost 5,000 accounts. Those 5,000 accounts are either in probate, like where you protest your values, they're in litigated, or they're just pending being posted to the tax roll, which a lot of them, probably about 1,500 of the accounts are minerals that I haven't received yet. Most of them are in HCAD, GCAD is pretty much done, they only have about 500 left where HCAD's got the majority of those. The tax levy that we are looking at with sup one being included for 2025 currently is estimated at $278,000, That's what we're looking at bringing in, which is a reduction in value from last year by about $13 million, and that is due to the exemptions. So here's a chart of all the exemptions that we currently have. I found this very interesting, it went from about $12 billion last year to $15 billion this year. And as you can see with that new law that's passed that's going out for vote, so don't forget to go vote in November, on whether you want your homestead to increase to 140,000 for the state exemption, because last year it was at 100,000. The over 65ers, the state exemption was 10,000, the state legislature has pushed that up to 60,000. So just on the state exemptions alone, our over 65 and disabled population are getting a $200,000 exemption. Then on top of that, the CCISD Board has approved in prior years a 5% or $5,000 local homestead exemption and an $18,330 over 65 or disabled person exemption. So for our people, they're actually getting $78,330 for all of our over 65 or disabled. And then it varies based on the value of the property on the homesteads. We also have what we call levy loss. And for 2025, we have what's called a Chapter 313, which is a Texas Economic Development Act that was passed back in, was approved in 2020, didn't start until 2021. It lasts 10 years, we are currently in year five of 10. The agreement basically holds that it's one account in our tax roll for Texas petrochemicals. It limits the MNO taxable value to be $100 million, which makes us have a MNO levy loss for about $3,489,891 and some change. We also have what's called a tax ceiling levy loss, which is due to those over 65 and disabled folks. They get frozen and it depends on when you were frozen. Just because your neighbor drops to zero doesn't mean that you get to drop to zero, it all depends on when you turn 65. I get that question a lot. The estimated total freeze loss for 2025 is $18,965,575. And that is increasing quite a bit from last year to this year because we're estimating about an additional 6,500 accounts that will drop to zero. Then give my ladies a little bit of credit here. The CCISD Tax Office has been able to collect over 99% of our tax levy as of August 31st of every fiscal year for the past five years in a row. And in 2024, we got to 99.4%. So my ladies have been working super hard. And then one more little pat on the back to them is we have really tried to improve our customer service because as you can imagine, we get a lot of people yelling at us and being angry about taxes. I mean, who wants to pay taxes, nobody? But this year, I've received several emails, so these are just a couple of those emails from different taxpayers that agreed that I could include their emails to you guys. And also with that second one, received six roses. Who sends the taxes as their collector roses? That's pretty cool, right? So I thought that was pretty cool. We get cookies and cakes too sometimes from the different taxpayers, but they have really been working hard on their customer service and it's been, it definitely shows. And that's all I have for today. Any questions?
Great job. Great job, Ms. Aragon. So yes, open it up if anybody would like to share anything, have questions? None? So absolutely, please give the ladies lots of credit. It's a lot to manage, it's a lot to keep up with, and y'all definitely are doing a great job and we appreciate it. So the roses unfortunately were not from us, so maybe Ali's, no. But yeah, we appreciate you and your department for y'all, you know, staying on top and doing a great job. So thank you. Okay, and so we will need a motion to accept the 2025 tax roll. So would somebody like to make that motion?
I move that we accept the 2025 tax roll, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lilly. All right, and with that, any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, no opposed. Thank you, Ms. Aragon, thank you, Ms. Lilly. All right, so the next item up is for the board of trustees to submit names in consideration for the Galveston County Appraisal District. Are there any motions? Any names, recommendations? So currently, Tom Farmer and Matt Doyle are set to expire at the end of this year. Do we want to submit those names as the recommendations? Do you want to turn your microphone?
Mr. President, I recommend that the board approves the resolution of the Clear Creek ISD Board of Trustees submitting the names of Matt Doyle.
And Tom Farmer.
And Tom Farmer, for election to the Galveston Central Appraisal District Board of Directors.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, and no opposed, thank you. And recommendations for the Harris County Appraisal District?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we approve the resolution of the Clear Creek ISD Board of Trustees nominating Martina Lamont Dixon and Melissa Noriega as candidates to be placed on the ballot for an appointed position by, on the Board of Directors for the Harris County Central Appraisal District.
All right, thank you, Mr. McKay. All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, and 7-0, no opposed. All right, next up is the approval of the new policy.
Okay, so Ms. Sar-Mekanik is going to share these three grievance complaint policies that were reviewed at the October Policy Committee meeting and the recommended changes aligned with the legal requirements mandated by Senate Bill 12.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Engel. So we had a conversation in the Policy Committee about these three policies regarding our three distinct grievance processes, DGPA for employees, FNG for parents and students, and GF for members of the public. There are extensive changes that comply with all the changes from Senate Bill 12 that became effective September 1st, and so that's why we're asking this to be adopted in one reading in accordance with BF Local that allows for emergency adoption when there are special circumstances that demand immediate action. Since September 1st, we have had multiple grievances filed and so we have been doing our best to comply with the law. We have been complying with the law, but it's very helpful to have these changes formally adopted by the board to comply with those changes. A lot stays intact in terms of, you know, four-level grievance process timelines have changed. There is now an additional requirement to accept additional documentation or claims at levels beyond one and to remand back to prior levels when additional information has been provided. There is no longer the ability of the board to appoint a hearing officer at level four. The board may however, appoint a committee of at least three members of the board if at level four, the board chooses to do that. So TASB has done a great job of taking all of those new requirements from Senate Bill 12 and incorporating them into recommendations. This is going to show up, all three of these policies will show up again in Update 126 when we receive that from TASB because they had locked down and can't bring it. So it will be part of Update 126, but we have not received that update yet and wanted to move forward with this action. So there can be clarity and transparency to anybody who's utilizing the process, what rules it is that we're following.
Thank you, Ms. Sar-Mekanik. I know I sat in on that meeting that day and remind me, this was part of, I guess, with the changes, it creates the opportunity for things to get resolved in those early rounds of grievances because it could recycle, right, with new evidence, new information. Once you get from one to two, it would go back and kind of be able to be reconsidered?
That is true, because now there is this opportunity for the grievant to add additional claims or additional information and when they do so, then the administration remands back to an earlier level. We have had good success with informal resolution and that's not part of the law. The law doesn't specifically address or change that and that's a practice that we implemented this last school year and that's been very helpful to us in resolving at the lowest level possible.
Good. All right. All right, anybody have any other questions, comments on it? No? With that? With that, all right, thank you very much. Shall I entertain a motion?
President Cottrell, I move that we accept the first and only reading of DGPA, FNG, and GF Local.
All right. Thank you, Trustee Lilly. All right, and with that, motion's on the floor. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your right hand? All right, and no opposed. All right, very good, thank you. All right, next up, Dr. Engel, you want to tell us about our A+ in attendance?
Absolutely, we are very excited about that. Clear Creek ISD continues to see strong attendance numbers which align with our Vision 2030 strategic plan to provide a world-class learning experiences while building connections and community. And that is so important to achieve that goal with students in attendance. This is not just by chance. The board will receive an update on systems and people behind this positive initiative and change. And this information was shared, a few of you were there during the Texas Ed Con TASB TASCA conference. And I just want to share, that was just a few weeks ago. And we have received multiple requests for the presentation, for information on, you know, how to implement the strategies that this amazing team put into place, as well as Region 4 asked for our presentation and strategies. And that was just last week, so we're pretty excited about that. And what we'll talk about here is, I'll turn it over to Ms. Hughes. Mr. Harden and Dr. Hopper will share the presentation that they gave at the conference and then entertain any questions or anything that you might have regarding the attendance, not just increase, but sustainability. So we're very excited. Thank y'all.
Yes, thank you so much. We are so glad to come back and talk to you about our continued work on this initiative and the teamwork that's been taking place behind it. As far as attendance matters, we know that every day counts. And we know this, that attendance is something that we took somewhat for granted in our district for several years. We had students who came to class and had great attendance. And we found over the years of COVID that we had quite a change in our culture and our attendance patterns. But attendance is really the heartbeat behind all that, what we do, for our teachers, for our students, for our families. It is really the heartbeat of a healthy school. And so this is a data shot of kind of where we were over the years. And once again, that 22 was a, that was a change in our system and our culture. And really, it was a surprise to us. We've talked about it here before. And the systems that it unveiled that we needed to strengthen our teamwork and our systems and articulation around the work that we do in order to create a system for support for this. We look at the strategic initiative, kind of a changing our course. We truly did believe that when we look at attendance, it impacts everyone. Everyone around this table and this room and throughout the district had a hand in it. Our outcome for our goal, we decided was certainly a 95%, was to come back to that pre-pandemic level and to increase that impact. We heard at the same time, we had a teacher retention committee, many of you remember at the time, our teachers were having to work so hard to keep up with kids out of the classroom, keep up with work, families and the office staff coming up with notes and things coming in in the office. And for our schools, trying to track that attendance, it was truly a challenge across all levels. And so really, we looked at using our work with Stephen Covey and the 4DX model and looking at what lead measures would be. And our lead measure was that we'll increase it by a district-wide system to improve attendance. Now, Mr. Harden's going to talk a little bit in a minute about what we, how we came around that and without looking outside for help, really looking within Clear Creek ISD. What created, thanks to you, truly, you created a sense of urgency for us for this and we're grateful that this was one of our three major goals and objectives for the year. And it truly did drive a synergy across the entire district to meet this goal and to change our outcomes. Instead of looking at a vendor, we talked to several vendors with lots of price tags. We really looked within because no matter the vendor, we still had to do the work and we still needed to change our culture. And we knew that was the work that we had to do, so it created a sense of urgency for us all. So we had a sprint team that came together. Those sprint teams have been really powerful for us to have quick teams of stakeholders that came together to look at the situation. Every single department had a hand in this, from human resources, that, from teacher attendance to assessment and evaluation. It was pumping data to us and then everyone in between. We know that when we come together to look at a problem, that another driving impact to this, the whole underneath it all certainly was the funding, the daily funding that we had for the loss of attendance. And we knew that we were all staring at something that we wanted to solve for. So we decided not to just admire the problem, but truly to fix it. We met just a four meetings for the group of us in a larger group. There's a lot of work that happened around that. But we started studying the qualitative and quantitative data around that. And it was interesting to hear the different perspectives from all the levels and looking at that. And we looked at our data. We had a perception of what we for sure thought we needed to solve for at this time. It really was, we thought we were solving for chronic absenteeism and that that was going to be our largest piece that needed to be addressed. This was a time where we certainly had kids out for a long period of time. But that was not necessarily what our data showed us. Our data showed us that our, it was not necessarily a pyramid shape, but it was more of a square. And that when we look at all of our data stacked up, that there were opportunities for improvement across all the bands within our district of our absentee and our students in all levels. From some of our elementary folks maybe thought it was a high school problem. It definitely was across the board, pre-K to 12, an issue that we needed to look at. Chronic absenteeism wasn't the biggest problem. It really was, all of our students just needed to attend one or two more days. We know that when a student misses two days a month, that they are in, at risk of being chronically absent and missing certainly credit at the high school and retention at the elementary schools. And that was a major factor. Our goal was to get the group across the board to just attend one more day. Now, coming into this, we did not have this common language or this structure to look at our data. And so we developed a tiered system based on, certainly there's groups out there for attendance matters and attendance works and some different groups that provides a lot of structures out there. But our tiers within our district became very important for us to have a common language and system of understanding what to look for. We changed our report cards. We changed our letters out to parents, which still we get comments on from parents here and there. We changed our processes at the classroom level, at the office level, and certainly across the district and how we looked at that. And this has been probably one of the pivotal points for us to name, to have the common language and to have the structure and to everyone to have a clear sense of understanding around what we were facing and what we were trying to improve. And so we've had data, we had tiers and then tier, tiers, and it's truly tiered data, not tiers. But we want to share a little bit with Mr. Harden with what he came up with to support our issue.
Well, what we came up with.
We did, we did, we did, together.
So we definitely had a data problem as well. All the campuses, talking to them, trying to take the time and effort to making sure they were pulling the right data in a timely manner. A lot of the times, they're working with data from last week or even sometimes last month if you move on the system. So we really wanted to make something simple for them and easy to use. It was also very much up to date, so be more proactive with what they were trying to accomplish. What we ended up developing was an attendance tier dashboard. We used this with tools that we had access to. As Holly mentioned, that we looked at some tools that existed out there. And when you buy a product like that, you get everything at once. And most of the time, we don't use 100% of it date one. We were already into the school year. So this was a nice way to ease into using a tool and not have to purchase something that literally would cost over $100,000 to be able to use right then and solve a big problem for us. Again, going back to that MTSS, that multi-tier solution, we took the cone, we took the square, made it into a cone finally, and then implemented that signing kids different Tier 1, Tier 2, Tier 3 levels depending upon the number of absences they had. The system, it pulled nightly from the SIS, so it was no additional work, it was fully automated. And then also allowed the campuses to drill down, whether they wanted to look at grade level, demographics, or different programs at each one of those levels. The, I'm sorry, I just went over all of that as well. So what, with an example of this though, because a lot of times, again, we throw all these data at a campus, is allowing them to then take the different tiers and spread that out. This is just an example of what a campus could do. The principals could look at the Tier 1 students and try to make sure they don't fall into Tier 2. How can they make, you know, proactive things? One campus, an intermediate school would use, you know, every week, every six weeks, or every month, perfect attendance, got ice cream during lunchtime. Some simple things like that, small bits to keep kids into the Tier 1 area. And the principal would take that role. Tier 2 then would fall into, if a student went into that level, counselors and APs can intervene once they hit into there, having one-on-one conversations with the parent and student once they become Tier 2. And then Tier 3s, that's when the full intervention teams would come into play. Before that, they were just all numbers. Just, you know, oh, this kid had, you know, 10 absences, this kid had 30 absences, one absence. This really gave the ability for the campuses to kind of have a focus on different levels of students for the first time. And then as they fell into those tiers, very quickly make the reactions going, oh, we have a new student yet. And because it becomes a Tier 2, let's make sure that student is taken care of. This was very, very well-received by the campuses and obviously utilized, and still utilized to this day. The key impact here though, is that the data that we were doing or giving them, making sure there was fidelity in that, still to this day. The tiers still exist, they still use the dashboard, there's been a year three now of using this. And again, it's, our data is showing that it's being used and it is successful. But the key is the partnership. We were not the first district to have a tool. In fact, many other districts, even the Houston area, purchased those $100,000-plus tools and had had them for years. Their ADA and their absences were nowhere close to where ours are. I had a phone call today with a Region 4 district because they're still wondering, how are we doing this? And I keep telling them, don't buy a tool. Have the conversations first, create the partnerships with the campus. What the work that y'all did, the work that Cabinet did, and the work the campuses are doing, that's where the work is. So the tool is great, it's been well-received, but really, it's the focus that the campuses have had on this as a goal. And with that, I'm going to turn things back over to hear how that actually looks at the campus and the community.
Absolutely. This certainly became a very important part to partner with our parents and to create that common message, not only internally but externally.
The fact that we use this as a constant messaging out to parents, but internally, but also externally, the fact that we also played videos at our football games, I think, speaks to the link that we were taking for getting the messaging out to our parents. But this was about every day counts and it's true. We worked hard to create community in our classrooms. We do that with morning meetings and class meetings across the district and to make sure that our students feel welcome and wanted. This external messaging and the community engagement has been an important piece in which we start at pre-K in Kinder. That is our area in which we try to target deeply about the long-term impact of setting up those systems and structures for attending school every day. And I'm grateful for the teamwork of everyone committing to that. A piece that we're experiencing right now, today, with everyone except for you at this moment, is part of this proactive vacation planning and coming up with this fall break and having times in which parents can take those times off, take care of appointments, take care of travel. And we started proactively communicating those dates so that parents can plan forward. Today is one of those days that they have been off and thank you for being here for this. But it has been one piece that we've heard from parents and from our staff that this has been an essential piece of having clarity around our message in attendance. As far as when we talk about attendance, it really does belong to everyone, it's a partnership with parents. And from our bus driver to our front office and our teachers and our principals, I'm going to let Dr. Hopper talk a little bit about that.
Yes, ma'am. And of course, once this reached the campus level, you know, it was our job to start implementing it. And what we see here over the couple of these slides are some of the ways that we had incentive programs and what those looked like with our students. But really, I feel like there were three things that made this very effective for us at the campus level. The first was that we had a very clear strategic set of goals. Last year, every meeting, starting in the summer and throughout the year, we talked about achievement, belonging, and attendance. That was a scaffold for everything we did. That certainly got across the urgency and the importance of that message. And also, talking in terms of achievement and belonging and attendance is a narrative that made sense to us. And then we were able to make that make sense to our community. And then, of course, we didn't just have that strategic idea, we also had a very useful tool in the form of the dashboard. And so the dashboard gave us daily information that we were able to use with individual students, with individual populations. And also, something that was sort of a follow-on effect, is it kind of gamified it for us. We've talked a little bit this year about scoreboarding. And, you know, seeing where we were in comparison to our sister campuses was a little fun. And when we saw that at Clear Falls, for instance, we were, we weren't always the highest in terms of raw score, but we were having some success in terms of achievement and closing that gap. That was a good feeling and it kind of motivated us to talk to our community in a certain way. But really, the most important thing that I think we did successfully as a campus and a lot of other secondary campuses did, that I'm aware of, is that because we had that urgency, we kept our foot on the gas all year. And if I was to give a piece of advice to any other campus leader, it would be that you just have to make it part of the conversation and you can never let up. It was part of our conversation over the PA announcements with the students, it was part of our conversation with the staff. And it was certainly, to the point that we were catching a lot of trouble sometimes on Facebook and other things, part of our conversation with text messages and emails and community blasts. But we were pretty open with our community that this is how we were seeing changes. The incentives were great and we got students excited and we did some fun things. But really, the incentives were just a permission structure for us to just have a non-stop conversation and dialogue about attendance. And then, of course, keeping it inside of that, that framework of achievement, belonging, attendance, they all feed into one another. So really, just having those three things, just having a very clear strategic vision of what we were trying to do that made a lot of sense to us. And then having a really useful tool in the form of the dashboard. And then finally, we just communicated and communicated and communicated about it. And, you know, and actually, with this year, we've seen that we've had a lot to communicate about with changes to the electronic devices and there's been a lot going on. And so we haven't been able to communicate as much about attendance this year. And we're seeing that we need to get back on it. And so it proves the lesson from last year, that you just have to communicate day in, day out and weekly about it. And that's been the number one place where we at Falls at least have had a lot of success.
Okay, and just to echo that, I, these are just the elementary examples too, of the scoreboarding and our class signs that go out on our doors every day when our kids are there. And also out in the car rider line, we put car rider signs. I know you've probably seen that at Armin Bayou Elementary when you've been out there. This is part of just that collective responsibility that we, you are wanted, you are welcome, and we want you here in school every day and in building that community and having everyone have a piece of that. We're excited about the progress that we've seen. This graph, you may be able to, and this is, this is very common to us because every single week, we are pushing this information back out as a scoreboard to our leaders. And we're excited to say that last year, we certainly hit that 95%. And we're excited to say that last year, we certainly hit that 95%. And this year, we're trending at the, above, at the 96 level. So we're nine weeks in and we are excited about the progress of where we are and what that looks like. But I think the system, the habits, the structure, the communication, those things are going to continue. And I think it's creating those habits and systems within our district and also helping families build those habits at home. So we're excited about this heartbeat of our, the health of our school district, that we have people who are, and our kids who want to be in attendance every day. And additionally, that our staff members, we have also a challenge of our staff members meeting, matching, or surpassing certainly our student attendance. So that's a high priority goal for us as well. It shows the culture, it speaks to the culture, and it speaks to the culture of our, in our campuses and our schools. So thank you for letting us share a little bit of our progress with you, and we continue to work on this and we'll report back at the end of the year.
Okay, perfect. Thank you all very much. I'll open it up.
First of all, I just wanted to thank Holly, Franklin, and Cabinet for formulating strategies for, you know, improving attendance post-COVID. That was a focal point, and I think the reason why it was so well-received at Tasby was, you know, when you start doing the math, a percent is almost the golden penny for a lot of our districts, you know, in our surrounding area. So that's why I think it was so well-received. And then you see it in our test scores, in our district improvement as well. When kids and when staff are present on a regular basis, it just sets the tone for, you know, student performance. So just thank you. I know that was one of the things, if Alice were here, I think she'd be singing your praises as well. Unfortunately, she's not. But those were the things that we were working on and we were intentional about getting kids back. So, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Cunningham.
I just want to echo that. I think it's a great job on behalf of Cabinet, but also on our teachers and staff at the schools, because that's really where it comes down to, is they're the ones that are doing it every day. So I get those emails, I think it's great to remind people, you know, and kids will be sick, but I think making sure on the days that they're not, that they're in school, because that's what's important and going to get them learning, and test scores will follow. I also really like the tiers. I think it's great to say we're looking at everyone, because so many times, we look at our lowest performing students and those are the kids we need to help. And I think looking at the big picture of all of the students and that's such, I think it's really impactful. So I appreciate you guys thinking outside the box and coming up with that and really focusing on the whole students, all the school that are in school.
I think you're going to hear a lot of praise on this, and I am certainly going to jump on that as well. It's my pleasure to have heard this for the second time, and as Trustee Cunningham mentioned, it went over very well because everybody needs this, but we're doing it. And that, I think, is very significant. The only thing I would add is, you know, keep your foot down on that gas pedal. I know you're doing a great job of that. Just last week at the coffee talk, there was some discussion of how do we manage attendance? How do we make sure our kids are in school? When should we not send our kids to school? So this is still in everybody's mind, and I do appreciate that, and I want to thank you for all the hard work that went into it.
Thank you, Trustee Larson. Anyone else? Before I? Please.
So I attended a lot of sessions at TechCon, and I think I told you guys this when you presented, you were by far and away the best, the most professional presentation that I attended. And I think we're lucky to have such great professionals working for the school district. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Trustee Mackay. And I'll echo that, and, you know, for all of y'all that presented at TechCon, it was great listening to it and the sense of pride, you know, that that was, you know, that's our district. And everybody in that room was so engaged. And, you know, I'm not surprised how many people have asked about it because, you know, just being in there and, you know, just the awe in so many of those faces, just like, wow, we didn't think of that. Or, man, I wish that was our district. You know, we could, we could see it and, you know, there was a lot of, a lot of excitement to say, okay, you know, this is what they're doing, we can do that too, which is, which is really great. And it's great that, you know, you're creative and innovative to figure out ways to make going to school fun, you know? You know, because whether you're, you know, in kindergarten, elementary, or a high schooler, you know, being creative, being creative to figure out, you know, this is, we have to try it, and if it doesn't work, we'll try something else, you know? And whatever we can do to support you, you know, to keep that creativity going. Because, you know, and it may not work at every campus. And, you know, what you do at Falls versus what they do at Springs may be different and across the district. But the fact that you're, you know, mindful and intentional with doing it and you come up with processes and reevaluate and say, this is how we've always been doing it, we got to look at it differently, you know, is very helpful and appreciated. I love the, you know, the attendance and achievement, you know, those two things and finding that correlation between those things. I think it would be nice when we're engaging the community, because as you mentioned, it's a teamwork, it's a collective. The community needs to understand how important attendance is, you know, from the achievement as well as the budget, you know? A lot of people don't get that. And when you talk about the budget and, you know, they just think that, you know, all their tax dollars and we get 100% of everything. But it's important for them to understand why we focus on these things like attendance, because it makes a difference in the achievement of the district as well as the financial stability. So I think that would be something to, you know, be proud of, you know, every time you have the opportunity, you know? It's, I think we're all very proud of, you know, all the accomplishments and the attention to detail. And I thought that was interesting, you know, Trustee Cunningham mentioning about pennies. You know, we don't want to go out, you know, reeking desperation and, you know, going out for the, you know, the copper pennies and, you know, every time you have the opportunity, we step back and say, what can we do different? What can we do better? And you make up that difference by getting kids to go to school, you know? Having some competitive nature and, you know, finding that excitement in it. So, so we appreciate, you know, everything that y'all are doing. So thank you very much. Great job.
Can I add one more thing? I just have to keep the gas, or the pedal on the gas. I just have to thank Mr. Moses, because every Friday, he gives us a little update and he sends it to Ms. Benzai. Yes, he does. And, yes, and we are at 96.31 attendance as of Friday afternoon. So he does send that out and it keeps that gas pedal going. So thank you. Thank you.
And that's more of that testament of your departments, your cabinet, working together, knowing that it's what Mr. Moses does, you know, in getting the kids to school, that it's impacting, you know, Ms. Benzai's department, you know? And we appreciate it. I mean, yeah. Thank you.
Just one more thing. I remember specifically when Franklin was working on the exempt, exempt out, you know, policy, having, having students myself. And so, you know, bringing some of those best practices from your former district to our district, you know, just helps. So, so like, like I said before, between you and Holly and staff, just thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Attendance and achievement, that's what it all matters. Okay, so last up, Discover CCISD.
Okay, so in alignment with our 2526 strategic plan, this is really looking at Goal Three are beyond boundaries. One of the metrics is to implement a district strategy for open enrollment, including intentional marketing and student recruitment. And we are very excited to kind of share the progress that we have on that. Ms. Paulson, Mr. Harden are going to share that information with you. And this campaign is launching very soon, yes. And website lives, so we're going to go ahead and share that information with you. Yes, thank you. We are, we are ready to go. So I'm going to turn that over to them and let them share our Discover Clear Creek ISD, there's a space for you campaign.
Yes, and there is a play on the word space, if you didn't figure it out yet. But I do want to just kind of carry on on the previous conversation about how we do such great work together as a team, but nothing rallies a team when there's a problem to solve. And so what I'm going to share with you today has been a year's worth of work by many, many, many people in this room and at home. So at the timing, just want to refresh the timing, we did have limited open enrollment last year about this time. So our marketing was really targeted to law enforcement, peace officers, and so on. So when the board opened the policy to open enrollment, we already had been staffed for the year. So it was really based on what spots are available. So we have, now are aligned to go out and market and push out to those that are within our school district that just haven't made their decision yet, as well as those who live on the fringe that may, that may not have a CCISD zip code yet. So just to remind, just to share out, I love this percentage, it's not mine, it's from the census, that nine out of 10 school-age students are enrolled in CCISD. So when you think about your market pool within our boundaries, we're going to go for that 96.4% if we can get there. But it's just, I think also, we just don't have a lot of movement happening. People love to live here, they stay well after their kids graduate. Ms. Aragon gave another reason why for people 65 and older to not leave their home. So, so we're looking at that and also now targeting families that live within CCISD who are not of school age yet. And so when they do make their choice, they're going to choose CCISD. And some of that work happened a couple of weeks ago, and several of you were there for our Realtors Luncheon to really talk about the great things that are happening in CCISD. And then out-of-district families who are interested in CCISD. So when we opened, when we went into open enrollment and we were staffing based on space availability classroom by classroom, we did put out an interest form, let us know you're interested, and we'll let you know when there's space available. And so based on that interest, we have 300 people, families, that do not live in our school district that say they want to come to CCISD. And I can tell you that there are many, many of them from private and charter schools, which is exciting, because we also want to be mindful of our, of our ISD neighbors too. But that just kind of gives you a sense that information is getting out. And that all happened well before we even pushed out this campaign. So our Discover CCISD campaign, I do want to take a moment, I have two new members of our team, Tekla Block Coven is here, she's, I don't know if you know her yet, but she actually used to do student family, student recruitment for Texas A&amp;M University in Galveston. So she kind of knows that world. And then Erin Jeffrey was the former Director of Marketing for Chick-fil-A in the Medical Center. So these two additions to our team has really helped us just stay focused on marketing, and we've had a really fun time putting this campaign together. So it's in three phases. First phase is to learn. So if you're not familiar with CCISD, you've got a three-year-old, all you know is you pay your taxes into Clear Creek ISD and someone says it's a good school district. Other than that, you have no idea what we offer. So we're offering district-level webinars the last two weeks in October, focusing on our world-class programs and marketing that out through our advertising campaign, as well as those that might be interested in coming from outside the district. And then for the first time, we're excited about this, every elementary school is going to have a campus tour day within a two-week window in November, and our team has been really supporting them on their collateral. And then, application window opens December 1st and it ends January 23rd. And I can tell you that getting to that date has been probably the hardest part of this campaign, because for so, you know, we've had different application windows for eSTEM, for dual language, and so we needed to align all of our in-district programs before we could go out and promote to out-of-district families. And this is our website, discoverccisd.com. So this is a standalone website. It is, it directs people back to our website, but we wanted to be able to track our effectiveness of our marketing, and this is a way to do that. So all the ads that you see on social media, the billboards that we'll be putting out there, will go back to this website. On this website, every open house or tour, if you will, from elementary schools are posted on there, and prospective shoppers can go in and register for the tour that they're interested in. So we will actually have their contact information in advance, which will also help with follow-up. So they just don't come and tour, we want to make sure that we're making touchpoints with them along the way. And this is an interactive map. So when they come to this website, if you live in the area, you're out of the area, but you don't know the school nearest you, because you don't know their names yet, you can come to this footprint and click around, and it'll tell you a little bit about the schools that are near your neighborhood. And so that gives them some interaction. I think we take for granted that we know all of our school names, but not everybody does. Okay. There we go. Oh, I'm moving the map. Can you advance the slide? There we go. Thank you. There we go. Okay, so these are some of the topics that we're going to have for the webinar series. These are all through Zoom, so they have to preregister in advance. So it's, so again, we'll know those touchpoints of people that are interested in learning more, and then we could follow back up with them. We'll record all of those, so they'll be available for playback. And then these are the campus tour days, and every one of them are listed on that website. We are including some other, we're including stream of innovation for Space Center Intermediate, Clearview High School, and each of the, comes along with the media kit. We'd spent a lot of time doing videos, commercials for every school. We haven't quite finished that project, but the majority of them are ready. And we've launched a targeted marketing and social media campaign that Mr. Cunningham saw on Friday, it launched Friday. And this is a sample of the campus flyers that are supporting those tours. So when the parents come in, they'll be able to leave with something in their hands. And these are the ads that have gone out. We also are putting billboards out at key locations across the district, high traffic patterns where there's cars that go through that. And then also putting concourse signage at the stadium, focusing on the visitor side. And then we're also going to be also working with our chambers of commerce to be able to promote that it could be an employee benefit. If you have a business here, but your employees live outside of our district, this could be an opportunity for, for an added employee benefit. And then the Realtor Luncheon that we had, which was great, and then we're starting back up our course in February of 2026. We've done this multiple years, it's been, you may not know this, but Clear Creek ISD is the only public school district in the state of Texas that has a continuing education credit in this area for TREC, which is the real estate license. And so we're excited about that. And then inside CCISD, I'll talk about that, but that's also part of this overall approach to get the word out that we are, we have space for families. And this is one of the commercials that is playing. And just in the launch from Friday, we have had 22,000 views from the ads that we've done so far, and 200 people have actually gone to Discover, have actually taken, gone to that website. And we have had some people already register for a tour and a webinar. So it's only, today's Monday and this launched on Friday. But as Mr. Hopper said, we have to keep the gas down. So it's not like you just don't do it one and done, you have to do it over time. This is our Discover CCISD timeline that, like I said, took a lot of work on many people's part to just map this out over time. So December 1st, the application window opens, and Mr. Harden will talk about what that portal looks like. And then we're closing it January 23rd. And so right now, what's going to happen in this next round is all of our in-district transfers and out-of-district transfers, and new applications are all coming through one system. So that we want to make sure that we're taking care of people that have transferred within the district or out-of-district, which are majority of our employees, that we resolve those first. And so we're basically wanting them to just commit that you're coming back, and that will be done by January 28th. Those people will be notified. And then in-district, any new in-district transfers for grades six through 12, because we need to get those settled before course selection in February. And then by April 10th, all out-of-district requests will be, they'll be notified. And that allows for us to staff for the interests that we have. And that will be a first for us this time around. And then May 15th, the portal reopened. And then May 15th, the portal reopens if there's still space. And that will remain open through the first of the school year to see how things all settle. Mr. Harden?
Thank you. So through this process and all these wonderful committees that we had, we realized there was a big gap in our, our systems. And we heard this from parents over the years. There was a lot of confusion sometimes whenever they were just trying to even get, apply for an application, apply for a program. And then just a multi-step process. And, and the first big piece was the alignment of all these timelines. Ms. Paulson, she, she mentioned it, but I will tell you, it was a lot of work. We have such amazing programs here and amazing people. Trying to get those all aligned on one timeline took a, a huge uplift. So just a huge thank you for everyone involved with that. So we kind of have, in the technology world, we kind of had this thing about going from complexity to clarity. Because again, our systems were fragmented. And not just that, we found a lot of times, if you didn't know this, this application system existed, you didn't get into the program. And then it was a effort after the fact to make phone calls, beg, borrow, and plead to, to get into a program just because you didn't know the timeline or you didn't know the system even existed. So with all the feedback we took, we were able to, again, we always balance out the building ourselves, like we talked about in the attendance conversation. We had five custom-built programs from amazing programmers we have, but they were very complex. You know, attendance dashboards are one thing just to take data and display it. It's something else to build something where parents will log in and try to fill out applications and do lottery systems. So going through kind of the, you know, data-driven decisions, we found a program called Schoolment at a very low cost compared to trying to build a massive system ourselves. That would be a one-stop shop for us. This would be all of our applications, all the transfers, in-district, out-of-district, all there. Parents not only can just log in for, with the one login for each student, it's one login for the whole family. They also log back in and check the process of their application. That was a big problem we've had with our previous systems. They would log in or they would just create an account that would have no information, then just constant calls to the campus or the program to find out what the status is. So communication is going to be better. This is really going to ease everyone's mind that we're hearing. And again, the advantage is multi-language support. We did not have that before. For our campuses and staff, you know, this board is very big on data. All those disparaging systems, there was, it was impossible to get that together to show you what our actual transfer data looked like. A lot of times a parent would go in, fill out an application. We would deny it because of something. Well, the only way to do it again was to go fill out another application. So it looked like there were 300 denials. Well, there was a lot of multiple denials because they've forgotten now. This is going to make it so easy for campuses to see how many students are trying to come into their programs, how many have been approved, and also at the district level, holistically to look at that information. We're very excited about this. A lot of effort has gone in from my team, Christina Stout and Clinton Huffman and Stephen Curry, and working with the committee and communications to, to basically tie all these systems together. And even the paper systems we're still working on to make this all electronic and a great process for parents.
And then the last piece of our effort, our strategy behind this is Inside CCISD, which you are all very familiar with, it's been in our district for over 20 years as a community education outreach program. And we really feel like at this point, we need to move it to an ambassador. Like you have a responsibility, you're coming, and you need to go and share out with what you know. And Dr. Engel has this quote that she shared with our leaders this summer, is that the best recruiters for your district are already in your district. And so what we haven't done in 20 years, we're going to do it for the first time this year, is use our DEIC membership. These are mostly employees that are appointed, elected by their campus. Obviously have people that have influence and leadership. And so they're going to come on, out of the classroom, four days out of the school year to go through Inside CCISD, 8:30 to 2:00. And they'll be working alongside community members as well. So it's, it's really going to be integrated together. And our first, our launch is October 21st. And we're going to start, every session's going to start at the stadium, and then they're going to learn about a big initiative that we have, and then they're going to go see. And so we're going to load them on buses and take them out to go see the work. And so we certainly would love to have you there too. We'll get you specific times of when the field trip is happening because I know everyone's got a busy schedule. But, but on that note also, I think the best marketing tool that we can use as our school district is the, the postgraduate experience. And I want to close with a video about, and this is also part of our IMCCISD that I think is probably one of the strongest commercials we could ever do about our school district is to feature our alumni.
Hello, my name is Metalli Banerjee-Ruths, and I'm a children's book author. I went to John F. Ward Elementary, Space Center Intermediate, and I graduated from Clear Lake High School. CCISD set me up for success as a children's book author because I was an art kid, I was a library kid, and I felt that I was always encouraged to be curious and to share my own stories. When I was in third grade, my elementary school librarian, Mrs. Klein, really encouraged and fostered my love of reading. She made the library feel like such a welcoming and safe space. And one day, she walked me over to the shelf and said, Metalli, look here. One day, when you write a book, this is exactly where it's going to go, in the library. And it feels really special to come back to my elementary school and see that my book is in the library. That kind of encouragement that I got early on in CCISD made me believe that I had a story worth telling and gave me the skills to share my story with other readers today. Oh my gosh, okay, so deary eyes. What started here, where I, in the place where I learned how to read and write and tell stories, that I come back home. Because CCISD really does feel like home. I am Metalli Banerjee-Ruth, and I am CCISD.
So if you show this to a prospective family, I, I bet they want to go see that library. But that's, that's our campaign and our efforts. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Paulson and Mr. Harden. And I'll open it up. Anybody?
Lots of work, lots of work. Oh my goodness, kudos to you because that wasn't easy to put all that together. And I'm excited and it's, it's exciting to watch it. And so I can't wait to see the results. Thank you.
Yeah, this seems like another example of how we have, we have an issue and the team comes together and does great work to come up with a strategy. Thank you to your team. This is not normal school business. We've talked about this, times have changed. We're changing with them. And this is a great example of that. And so kudos to you and your team. And it looks really good. And, and I hope we see some really good results from this.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll echo everything that they just said. And, you know, thinking, sometimes you have to think like a business. Welcome to the team. Thank you all. We're excited. And like they said, you know, this is one of those times where, you know, here's an initiative, let's, let's go all out and, you know, let's see how it goes. And, you know, we're all in. So we're excited to see it all come together. So thank you all very much.
I just want to thank the team. This is truly a collaborative teamwork. You can tell. I mean, just so much work and effort went into all of this. So thank everybody and so many different people that aren't in this room today too, that work together. So anyway, collaboration and we're excited, like I said, to see where, see where it leads. Great job.
Okay, and with